We have with us tonight Dr. Rod Godbault from the Word of Truth Ministry to lead us in our invocation. If you will, please all rise.
I want to first of all thank the mayor and the commissioners for your support on National Day of Prayer. It turned out very well, a good turnout, so thank you, and we look forward to next year. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for allowing us to come together, and we ask your headship in this meeting, your guidance, your leadership, as you said in your word, to pray for those that have authority, that we might live a peaceful life. We thank you for these offices of this city. We ask your blessings upon them and their family, and that everything would go according to your will and to your plan, and that your name receive all glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe Cede, and thank you, Dr. Godbault. Next, we have our agenda before you. Is there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Yes, Mayor Mayor, if I may, I would like to pull items D and C off the consent agenda, so that we can discuss the overage, or D and E, I'm sorry, D and E off the consent agenda. And I would like to add, if possible, a discussion of what we might need to do to close some local streets for the Fourth of July celebration.
Okay, so we'll be adding to our new business, we'll be adding item D and E. They'll come right under in that location, and then we'll add an item F, and that will be street closures for Fourth of July.
Motion to approve with those amendments?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, seeing none opposed. Next, we have presentations. I do not have, I do not have my first resolution, my first proclamation. Give me, I'll read it on here. Alrighty. Alright, my first proclamation tonight is proclamation of Law Enforcement Officers Week, where as the Congress and the President of the United States have designated that there be a National Law Enforcement Officers Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of North Carolina play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the state, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement officers and agencies, and that members of those agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Whereas the citizens of Hope Mills recognize and appreciate the contributions made by law enforcement officers at all levels of government. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, call upon all citizens to observe the week of May thirteenth through nineteenth as Law Enforcement Officers Week in Hope Mills, and that all our people join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. In so doing, they have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to recognize the great job that our police officers do, and every day we should recognize you, but we especially want to thank you next week. Thank you. Okay, so I've got, okay, I got stakeholders coming up. That's good. Alright, our next proclamation is National Public Works Week proclamation, where as public work service provides in our community an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on those facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of those facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby proclaim the week of May twentieth through May twenty-sixth as National Public Works Week. In the Town of Hope Mills, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And again, this is another group that does an outstanding job, and it's, we should recognize and thank them every day, but glad that we have a special week for them also. We also have a Building Business Rally proclamation, and I brought tonight some information in reference to this important rally that's getting ready to take place. And each mayor in our mayor's coalition also is doing a special proclamation in reference to this. But this is in partnership with Fayette State, PWC, Fayette State, a lot of different organizations that trying to boost business that require local business to have more input in what happens with local type contracts. But wherever, whereas the Town of Hope Mills, Coman County, Hope County, Coman County Schools, the Town of Spring Lake, PWC, FSU, FTCC, Cape Fear Valley Health, and City of Fayette Fast have teamed up together to increase business opportunities with local vendors. Whereas millions of dollars will be spent annually by these local organizations and their efforts to increase business with local vendors, promote a diverse and viable economy, and raise awareness of the need for local contractors. Whereas a Building Business Rally is taking place May twenty-second, 2018, to educate and engage local businesses on how to do business with organizations and the types of goods and services each organization needs. Whereas the Building Business Rally will also provide valuable information from a variety of local and state resources that support business growth, as well as present classes to local vendors to increase knowledge and business opportunities. Whereas the Town of Hope Mills is proud to show support for local businesses and contractors of Coman County and surrounding areas. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, to hereby honorably proclaim May twenty-second, 2018, and honor the Building Business Rally, and encourage residents to spread the word, and local business, suppliers, professional service providers, and prime and subcontractors of all sizes to participate. And again, the key to this is another opportunity for those that don't think they have a chance of getting a contract or a bid, to learn more information, and also to learn about how you go about writing an RFP. It's a great opportunity because all the key people in our area that will have contracts coming up soon, this has given you an idea as a local business person what you can do. And they're talking about things like if you've got a backhoe, or if you've got a pressure washer company. There's always smaller things that can help when there's a big project. And we found that, you know, that we very often are lacking some of those key people, and we've got a lot of local people that could benefit from the knowledge of what we need in Coman County. The next proclamation is proclamation for Memorial Day. We're celebrating Memorial Day, May twenty-eighth, whereas Memorial Day was first rightfully deserved on May thirtieth, eighteen sixty-eight, to commemorate the sacrifices of Civil War soldiers. And whereas Memorial Day was previously called Decoration Day because it was a time to set aside to honor the nation's Civil War dead by decorating their graves. And whereas in nineteen seventy-one, Congress declared Memorial Day a national holiday to be celebrated the last Monday in May as a time to set aside to honor all veterans, living and dead. And whereas every Memorial Day Americans remember the debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans who gave their lives for our country. And whereas thousands of American men and women have given their lives for their country, and many thousand more still bear severe disabilities and the scars of war. And by remembering these, we are reminded that the cost of war and peace is great. Whereas we continue to rely on our brave and steadfast men and women in uniform to defend our freedom. As we commemorate this noble American holiday, we honor those who fell in defense of our freedoms, and we honor them in our memory. And now therefore, I'd be it resolved that I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and in memory of the thousands of American men and women who have answered the call to duty in defending the hard-won freedoms we enjoy today, and who have sacrificed their lives in defense of their country. And our special ceremony will be on Memorial Day, and it'll be in our Veterans Park. Next, we have the, I have another proclamation that's not on the agenda. Do you want me to read this one too? Okay, have one more, then I'll turn it over to you Drew. This is a proclamation for the Air Quality Stakeholders Committee, where as the Federal Clean Air Act through the Environmental Protection Agency establishes air quality standards to protect public health and welfare. Whereas the Fayette Metropolitan Area Air Quality Stakeholders Committee has acknowledged the importance of these standards in promoting quality of life, economic development, and future healthy development. And whereas the Fayette Metropolitan Area Air Quality Stakeholders Committee will strive to maintain at or below the federal ozone standard as set annually by the EPA. And whereas in two thousand and three, the Air Quality Stakeholders Committee was created to proactively improve air quality for the citizens of the Fayette Metropolitan Area and its participating local governments. Whereas EPA, in conjunction with state governments, business, industry, and environmental interests, has developed an option known as an Ozone Advanced Program, through which an area in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and EPA can voluntarily improve conditions through strategies developed through an action plan to help avoid a designation of non-attainment. Whereas the benefits of participating in an Ozone Advanced Program include clean air sooner, potentially avoiding non-attainment designation, preference during EPA federal grant allocations, flexibility to achieve standards in cost-effective ways, development of local standards in partnership with stakeholders and the state, and other benefits. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Fayette Metropolitan Area Air Quality Stakeholders Committee that the committee fully supports the Ozone Advanced Program as approved by the Fayette Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Policy Board, and will participate in the development and implementation of an action plan which will reduce ground level ozone concentration in preparation for the upcoming ozone standard. And now, I will turn it over to Mr. Holland and Ms. Adams for our presentation of our 2018-2019 budget.
Did you want me to go over it first? Alright, what you have, you should have your books at your table. What you have is the budget here, this is your budget workbook. This is your copy to have, and just to explain what you have in it, the front section right here before tab number one, that's the actual budget document, the first section. So that I have your general fund, your POW bill, your stormwater, a breakdown of all the capital assets individually by department, the pay schedule, and then the fee schedule in the back. The fee schedule in the back, the parts in red are the changes that we're suggesting with the recommended budget, and then each tab is a different, is the justification for what's in the actual budget. Tab number one's your revenues, tab two's debt, and then each one after that is the different departments and the justification. So you essentially have the same thing to look at that me and the town manager Melissa have used in order to get this budget to you. So it's basically an operating budget, there's nothing fancy in it. And Melissa's going to go over the budget message, and then you'll decide when we'd like to schedule a budget workshop, where we can go over your questions, anything that you have on this.
Thank you Drew. Honorable Mayor and members of the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, the Town of Hope Mills continues to be a great place to live as the town strives to maintain a positive balance of commercial and residential growth.
And this is page one in your books if you'd like to follow along.
That's okay. That enhances the town's ability to improve services provided to its citizens, and further investment in the town's future through careful and strategic planning, funding and scheduling of capital projects, beneficial partnerships that provide opportunities for funding of improvements, innovation in developing the town's identity, and promoting the highest standards for our citizens. In accordance with the requirements of North Carolina general statutes, I hereby submit the proposed budget for fiscal year July one, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, for the Town of Hope Mills. The proposed budget is designed to keep the town on a course to meet its objectives during the next fiscal year. Highlights of the proposed fiscal year two thousand and eighteen-nineteen budget are as follows. Ad valorem taxes, four million seven hundred and forty-one thousand, estimate is based on a ninety-nine point six-four percent collection rate with an approximate tax base of one billion thirty-four million eight thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars, keeping the existing tax rate at forty-six cents per one hundred dollars of valuation. Recreation tax is five hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Estimate is based on the existing rate of five cents per one hundred dollars of valuation, multiplied by the value of one cent of tax. Of tax, which the amount is one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Solid waste fees, one million one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar estimate is based on the existing rate of eighteen cents per month, or two hundred and sixteen dollars per year. The solid waste fee includes garbage, recycling, and yard waste. State shared revenues, the state's shared revenues are estimated based primarily on previous year's distributions. The largest receipts from the state are sales tax and utility franchise tax. These have been budgeted at three million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and nine hundred thousand dollars respectively. Fund balance, eight hundred thousand dollars of unreserved, undesignated fund balance is recommended for this budget. Expenditures from the general fund. Capital outlay, all capital items have been appropriated, and a list has been provided of each department's requests for your review in the capital outlay section of this proposed budget. Personnel, no new positions are proposed in the general fund. The budgeted salaries and benefits reflect the results from the new personnel policy approved at the Board of Commissioners meeting on March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to take effect beginning July one, two thousand and eighteen. Cost of living adjustment, the budget reflects a cost of living adjustment, or a COLA, of one point twenty, one point two-nine percent. These amounts are based on information from the North Carolina League of Municipalities for the current year and the upcoming year. Employee benefits, employee health insurance has been budgeted with a one point nine percent increase. Dental insurance increased one percent. Vision and AD accident and, AD and D, which is accident and
Accident, death, and dismemberment.
Short-term disability and life insurance had a slight decrease. The budget also includes a five percent 401K contribution, five percent for law enforcement officers, which is state mandated, and state mandated retirement of seven point seven-five percent, eight point five percent for law enforcement officers, and longevity bonus. Debt service, all debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. Parks and Recreation Comp Plan and Master Plan for Golf Course Property. The proposed budget includes funds to continue the process for a Parks and Recreation Comp Plan, and to design a Master Plan for the Golf Course Property as discussed during the budget retreat in March of this year. Ongoing design for the new public safety facility, the proposed budget includes funding of seventy-one thousand for programming and design for a new public safety center. The need for this facility was identified in a facilities master plan developed by Gordon Johnson Architecture in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. New vehicles, the proposed budget includes the purchase of two new police cruisers, a F-250 truck for the POW bill fund, and an F-250 truck for the stormwater fund. Revenues from the POW bill fund, state distribution is four hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, estimate based on previous year's distributions. Fund balance, we have appropriated thirteen thousand from POW bill fund balance. Expenditures from the POW bill fund, capital is seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars, has been budgeted for a new F-250 and other new equipment. Debt service, all debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. Revenues for the stormwater fund, stormwater tax is six hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, estimate based on county's residential and commercial parcel information. Fund balance, we have not appropriated any funds from stormwater fund balance. Expenditures from the stormwater fund, capital purchased, thirty-eight thousand for new F-250. Debt service, all debt service requirements have been appropriated in this budget to meet our debt obligations. As we proceed into the next several years, we will continue to evaluate projects and personnel needs as they relate to the provision of services. We have several projects which will be initiated during this fiscal year. Therefore, it will be important to prioritize programming needs with future budgets. We will continue to work with town commissioners, staff, and citizens to establish our goals and objectives as the town grows to provide the level of service expected. Town staff has been instrumental in the development of this document. I commend them for their hard work in submitting requests that control costs while providing service levels expected by the town commissioners, management, and our citizens. I would like to say a special thank you to our department heads, and especially to the finance director, for their time and effort in the preparation of this document. Without their help, this budget could not have been developed to address both the present and future service needs. This budget reflects my recommendations based on department meetings, evaluation of existing service needs, and input from the town commissioners. The fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen budget represents a level of funding that will allow the town to maintain, and when possible, improve current service levels while making organizational changes to provide the best possible programs for our citizens. It is important to note that with any budget, external forces can affect these projections, and it is for that reason that these figures proposed are a conservative forecast of our revenues and expenditures for the next year. Please review the information, and should you have any questions, please let me know. And we'll look at, we'll discuss setting a budget workshop for sometime in May. Behind the agenda item in the, in your packet, there's a May calendar and a June calendar. We were hoping to have the public hearing on June the fourth, that first meeting in June, if at all possible.
I'm sorry, we can scratch the twenty-ninth off of this calendar, correct? We have a town hall day?
The twenty-ninth, yes sir, that is the night of the state dinner. In Raleigh, that I believe you all are going to.
Would you want to do it?
And on the twenty-eighth, we are closed for Memorial Day.
Would you consider the fourteenth? Would that be?
That's not much time to study this book.
I was looking at the twenty-second.
I can't do it the twenty-second.
I can't either. I got FT, that's the Building Business Rally on the, from three to eight, three to seven.
How about we do the twenty-third?
Yeah.
I'm good the twenty-third.
I'm not. I have graduation on the twenty-third.
I might have too, I don't know.
It's a busy month.
Honest with you, I just need time to really read this thing from cover to cover, and you still don't cover it from cover to cover, just get all the highlights.
Thirty, thirty-one, everybody?
Thirty, thirty-one's good for me.
Good for me, one of them.
It's clear for me, it's clear for me.
What you got Jackie?
As far as I know, it's clear. The only thing I'm wondering is, is that going to give you enough time?
No, not to advertise for the public hearing.
So you're going to have, if you're going to do the public hearing on the fourth?
No, we have to have
Our board, regular board meeting is on the fourth.
Yeah, we have to have ten days, and then two or three days to get it to the newspaper, so.
And then, and then after we have the public hearing, you're going to need the time, if there is any concerns or changes, time before we get to the end of the month to come back and meet again to approve the changes, if there are, if there should be some. You know, hopefully there'll be, it won't happen, but. So timeframe, what do you think?
Seventeenth?
Not good for me.
Twenty-fourth?
That's graduation, and the sixteenth is out for me as well.
Twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth is fine for me.
Twenty-fourth is fine for me.
You have the Citizens Academy, I guess that won't affect us.
That won't affect us, that's at the fire department, that night, so that, we could still.
Veterans committee meet that night.
We could schedule it at five-thirty. Just an idea.
Twenty-fourth's good for me. Am I available about any of those days? Twenty-fourth would work, and still meet the June fourth recommendation, right Drew? That's the only question I have. If you're going to do, if you're going to stay on June fourth, and you got to back it off ten. And that's your available days.
That's right, at ten days, right there.
Is that ten days or ten business days?
Ten days, I think. Ten calendar days, right?
Well.
Yeah, it's ten calendar days.
But you also have to take into account getting it published in the paper.
That's twelve days. I wouldn't have enough time to get it to the newspaper.
How about the eighteenth?
The eighteenth, my daughter's getting married on the nineteenth. I am not going to be here on the nineteenth.
Are we going to have to go into June then?
I hope not.
There's nothing left in May.
That's what it looks like.
I mean, let's shoot, shoot for the thirtieth.
May thirtieth?
Yeah, I mean, we could shoot for the thirtieth, the, May thirtieth or the thirty-first, or the twenty-fourth, and not worry about the public hearing.
What's the second meeting in June?
The second meeting in June would be the eighteenth, so we'd be fine.
The only thing is that second meeting of June is the Phoenix Officer Conference.
that second meeting of June is finance officer conference.
We have to have it signed by June thirtieth, correct?
I mean, we could.
We can have the public hearing on the eighteenth, can't we?
Yeah, the public hearing have to be go- have to go to on the eighteenth and then back it off from there. And then that narrows, narrows it down to the window.
We, I mean, but we could still have the public hearing on the fourth, provided that, you know, um, y'all are good with that. We could set that tonight.
Public hearing either way.
I'm just thinking if you make substantial changes.
Right.
It would be nice to, but we could still set the public hearing for the fourth.
You could always have a second public hearing if absolutely necessary, if there are a bunch of substantive changes or you could cancel the public hearing. If you go ahead and set the public hearing tonight before, then you're well within your notice requirement. If there are no substantial changes, you can proceed with the public hearing on the fourth. If there are substantial changes, you can cancel the public hearing on the fourth and reschedule it for the uh, for the next meeting.
For the eighteenth.
And then you don't have to worry about the ten day notice.
Yeah, well.
That's not gonna give us much time.
So would the twenty-fourth work, okay, for everyone? I, I don't, I'm just, for not sounding bad, I'm trying to sound nice, but if the department heads have done this and if you've gone and met with everybody and the departments have agreed and then Drew has gone through it, of those of us up here, the only one that really has a s- a whole lot of knowledge is gonna be our resident CPA over here. I'm just wondering, what are we gonna be looking for as we go through this item by item?
Well, I don't, I don't believe we're gonna go through it item by item.
Us.
Oh, okay.
I think the time that we need, the time that we're using to go through this.
Budget workshops for any-
What do we need to do that for? In other words, why are we gonna take two weeks before we have the first workshop? Could we not do a workshop sooner and do whatever amount of this we've got covered by that time? Because either way, if you, if we were to go through and workshop this whole document, it's gonna take longer than one evening unless we wanna stay here a long time. I think that's my concern.
We're looking at a workshop very similar to how we did it last year.
Yeah, just, just to go over the highlights.
We've got a new board this year.
And the, and-
And that's why I'm saying is if they're, if they're wanting to spend a lot of time reading it and have a lot of questions, would it be better for us to do a workshop, say on the fourteenth, and then another workshop on the thirtieth? Because I think we set it up last year in that manner so that we would cover a substantial amount of it and then we would move to the next part of it, so that you didn't have the whole document to consume all at one sitting. And that was just my thought. I don't remember Commissioner Legg, if you'll remember, we, we did the finance committee also met as a separate item too and went through it again, if you'll, as well as I can remember from last time. But, I don't know.
It's totally up to y'all.
I'm just thinking, a lot of questions and this lengthy document, then it might not be that you can schedule your hearing when you want to because of that, but if you, if we, if we look at it objectively and take a certain section and then have that discussion, if we wanna go further after that, we could at that meeting, but what's your thoughts Commissioner Legg since you've requested uh, lots of time to re- to review it?
I would like to have the opportunity to maybe not detail it, but to have the opportunity to go through it and look at it and see if there's anything we need to cut or could cut that we're wanting items here without raising taxes. Would be able to, to possibly, if necessary, make cuts in one area that would benefit requesting another area.
Yes.
Go ahead ma'am, I'm sorry, your microphone.
Oh, thank you pardon.
Um, with, with all due respect, I mean, I, I don't mean this disrespectfully, truly I don't. But Drew and I have already done that. We, we have, we're, this is a bare bones.
But I haven't.
Right, right. And, and the budget workshop is for any questions that you may have.
I work for these people. Now, I'm gonna make sure I take care of the money properly. I'm sorry, go ahead Ms. Bat.
Um, as a commissioner, I know what we're supposed to do and we're supposed to be working for the public and everything, but to me, when you go through this budget, and I know um, our town manager and our finance director has been through it and they've gone through it with the department heads. I do not go out to the department heads and I don't go into the organizations and work, so I would not know where I would think an item would need to be cut here or added someplace else. I mean, I'm, I don't have the expertise and training that the department heads had, so I, I wouldn't know where to. I mean, if they say that they need it and, and who, who are we to cut it or say they can't have it? That's just my comment.
Comments?
I think, Madam-
Yes, sir.
I think when I spoke with uh, Finance Officer Allen and Tamandra Adams, that they have already gone through and where there were uh, significant variances, they've made some narrative about that already within this book. We're just getting the book tonight, so of course, we're taking it all in, but it seems like we could cover it an hour and a half. And even if, I don't know if y'all wanna roll up your sleeves on the twenty-first and start at five o'clock, have an hour and a half meeting with the budget workshop, then let the mayor do the leadership uh, workshop and then back to the regular meeting at seven.
The Board of Adjustment has them, yeah, you all have a Board of Adjustments case at six o'clock.
Is that on there?
Yeah.
What was, Madam Mayor, what was, what was the problem with the fourteenth or the fifteenth? Is that not enough time or?
That, Commissioner Legg said it wasn't enough time, but I was thinking that if we, if we chose the fourteenth and we do our due diligence between now and then and covered as much as we could, then we could come back and, and then put it on the next meeting, either on the twenty-first or we could put it on um-
Well, that's my recommendation, Madam Mayor, because we can always recess. You can recess the meeting on, we can start it on the fourteenth, we don't get where we need to be, we, you can recess it and pick it up at the next meeting.
Or we could recess it for the, I mean, if we wanted to lock in on the fifteenth.
Or the fifteenth. Yeah.
Or we could recess it to the thirtieth if we wanted, but the main thing would be have it so that we, we take a chunk of it and don't get burned out, because I, I know just from past experience, when you start asking questions and reading through the narratives, it gets real, you know, you, there's lots of questions and lots of things that we have to go through. But would that work? Would that work if we did the, the, the fourteenth with, starting with?
It'd work with me, I think, I, I think start it on the fourteenth, let's go from there, at least start it.
Would we want to do the, a, a regular meeting time on the fourteenth?
Yeah.
What, how would you feel about that? If we came on the fourteenth at regular meeting time at seven and planned for an hour, hour and a half?
Yeah, I was thinking of the public input too. I was thinking of the public as well, because they may wanna attend the workshop.
Yeah. So if you, if you wanted to say, six o'clock, six o'clock?
I can speed read.
All right, but and not, not in the, with not that intent, with the intent being get as far as you can in this budget. And then wherever we are, if we continue by going through or whatever, however we want to handle it, but the main thing is you can come prepared with items that you have uh, a recommendation for or a concern for. So if we go to the fourteenth at six, and then we could look at with the opportunity then of recessing and, and picking up another date and that could date could be either the fifteenth or go to the thirtieth. But you then could set your hearing date, don't you think you could go ahead and set your hearing date for June fourth? With us doing that?
Yeah. I, I would say, Madam Mayor, just keep the recommendation on June fourth.
Okay, so, okay. Do I need that in a form of a motion?
No, I think not.
So, okay.
If you wanna set the public hearing, you do, but.
Okay, so you'll make them-
I'll make the motion we set the public hearing on June fourth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to set the hearing on June fourth, we have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
All right, so we have the fourteenth at six o'clock.
Fourteenth, six o'clock.
Okay. Uh, if you do have questions about the book or just any questions about anything in general about it, you're welcome to call me at any time and let me know.
And, and would that be okay if they email, if there's a particular section they wanted to have in, they could email you that question?
Yep.
So that if there was research need to be done, you could bring it on that date, uh, on the fourteenth.
Right, if it's certain questions that you may have that involve some research, it, it'd be appreciated if you let me know in advance and I can have that information, or I could go ahead and answer it back through the email and say here's, here's why that is or here's where that number came from.
And y'all can write in these. You can do, you can write, highlight, do whatever you want to do.
Yeah, that's your book.
Yeah.
So.
You get to keep it.
I've already got a little X's zero, zero already.
Your column is all zeros.
Yeah.
Until you say what goes in it.
Alrighty, so the fourteenth at six and that'll be a um, meeting notice that we're gonna do a budget workshop. Alrighty. Now, we're next, we have an update on the public safety facility. Let's turn it back over to you.
Again.
Yep.
Okay, public safety facility, uh, the March two thousand seventeen council retreat, uh, it was approved to move forward with the public safety facility on the current site that the police and fire station is at now. Um, so we didn't have to look for property or purchase property, we could use the property that we currently own and go ahead and get the pro- the, the project started. Uh, apparently this is a project that's been discussed for the last ten years and there hadn't been any action to get moving forward on it. So there's excitement in getting this project going. We've started the process, we've hired an architect. He is engaged in uh, developing, um, I guess the design and the layout for this property. We meet with the architect, I believe, on the fourteenth. Um, I don't have the time for that meeting yet, I'm waiting to hear back from him. We, we've scheduled that uh, day uh, to meet with him. He's gonna let me know the time and show us the, I guess, the schematics where he's at right now. That does include though, um, tearing down the existing facilities, they will not be used or be incorporated into the new facility. And we don't have a plan at this point in repurposing those or, or using them in any other way. So I didn't know if you had any other questions about the project.
Madam Mayor, just, I mean, I just heard from citizens that they, they couldn't see why at least one of, one of, one of the buildings couldn't be repurposed for expansion of our administration.
Right, the way that the layout of the new facility will be, these, the new building will be in front of them. They'll operate it out of the current facilities. Once the building is built, then they will tear those down and then this will be the parking and the area behind the new facility that will have to be used for um, you know, it was, it's kind of a little stretch to even make it fit on the property that we have, but we've got that worked out. But it does not involve keeping the existing facilities and based on police and fire chief, the existing facilities, we have put, knowing that we were going to do this project the last several years, we have not put any major maintenance into those facilities, knowing that they're not gonna be here. So there is some major renovations needed in both of them. If we were to keep them for something, they would still have to have a lot of major updates and maintenance just in order to, to keep them around and use them for something else if we were even thinking about doing that.
I'm just telling you what I'm hearing on uh, from my constituents.
Yeah.
Mainly the police department, um, is I think we're busting at the seams over here, I, I don't know. Uh, that's really, you guys are in the trenches, you know better than anybody. Seems like we're running out of room in the administration building and there are times where this room's even busting at the seams. Maybe twice a year, we have standing room only in here.
Right.
You know, at some point in the future, we might have to build more buildings closer by or add on to this one or something.
Yeah, I think they were saying we would go up on this one.
Right, we did that facility study.
Yeah, I think they said this building you would go up because you, yeah, but you'd put that way, because space wise, there's not enough land to do an expansion, but you would, you could.
Go up.
Raise the roof.
Raise the roof.
Be sure our office is on the main floor.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Drew, the basic design footprint, how many entrances and exits?
I have not seen that.
You haven't seen that?
We may see that Monday the fourteenth.
Okay, and we have no estimated cost either? Or projected cost or?
I've been estimating eight million.
A window of cost?
Yeah, I've been estimating eight million. Uh, every time the architect brings up cost, I still throw out the eight million. I believe now it's probably in the ten, eleven range.
I was gonna say, you're being very conservative Drew.
I keep telling them eight.
Very conservative, extremely conservative.
Right. So, I'm trying to keep the cost down as much as possible. You can ask uh, the fire chief. I'm trying to keep those costs down as uh, as much as possible with still getting the benefit of everything that we need out of this building.
Okay, so let me, okay, so let me go another way. What's the minimum entry and exit points that, that we want the architect to consider?
Oh, no, I haven't, I haven't even gotten to that level of- I don't know that we're at that level in the process for entry points. There'll be a main entrance. I know the police will have a um, sali gate at the back, a locked area where the cars can come and go. The fire station will have a double access to the um, to the base, an entrance and an exit, both sides like it does now.
Like it does now, so they'll be able to enter and exit on Golf View and Rockfish?
Golf View right now, I believe, is the plan, to keep it as similar as to what it is right now. But again, we're not that far into the process that we have to plan showing all the entrances and exits. We may have that Monday the fourteenth at that meeting.
Okay.
He's gonna show us where he's at, at that point.
So, the final question I have is in the budget, it's recommended seventy-one thousand, so what is that to cover?
That covers where we are with the architect at this point.
I thought we already paid the architect.
We haven't paid him a dime yet. That's actually the same amount we have in the current year budget that we have not spent.
Okay.
So.
Just re-appropriated.
We're re-appropriating it into next year's budget, the same exact amount.
Same amount, okay.
Now, we will have to pay him a lot more than that, but that's just the preliminary funds that we already have available.
Well, there's one question off the fourteenth meeting. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you Drew.
Anything else?
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Public hearings, none. Public comments, none. All right, we'll go to our consent agenda. From our consent agenda, consideration of approval of the minutes of the April sixteenth, twenty eighteen regular meeting. Consideration of approval of dispos- disposition of surplus items from the finance department and from the police department due to the condition or replacement of the fixed asset and any amounts received from the sale of these assets will be recorded in sale of accet- assets and approved resolution number twenty eighteen dash eleven. Consideration of approval of third-party agreement between DOT, Village Company LLC and the Town of Hope Mills placing responsibility of maintenance of sidewalks for the Town of Hope Mills. And the other two items will be in new business. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. On, under old business, consideration of approval of the town parade guidelines for our annual July fourth parade. Does anyone have questions about that and Ms. Adams?
Well, um, Mr. Bullock's here to answer any questions. Uh, on number, number five, um, there was a suggested edit by the town attorney. And that has been added, that the parade speed is a maximum of five miles per hour. Do not stop unless there is a safety reason for stopping, keep it going to avoid gaps. Um, and Mr. Bullock's here to answer any questions that you have about um, the plan going forward to um, prevent the gaps. I believe that they had a follow-up meeting following the Christmas parade and some things were discussed um, as to, you know, what, what they would do to keep things moving along. I believe there was a dance troupe that actually stopped and danced at the Christmas parade and they will not, they will not be doing that again.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bullock, don't we have people in the gators patrolling the, the parade route?
Yes, sir, and what happened in the past is that we, we're at the tail end and we're getting parade out. And so what we're looking at doing this year is we'll have the golf carts on the gators. And so as soon as the parade starts, there'll be a gator going off with it and then it will come, have a certain point and come back and then we'll monitor from the side. I've talked with SERC and we'll have some of the SERC members spaced out. Um, also with our meetings that will be starting up with, um, town staff and we'll talk to the police department as well 'cause they're on every corner. So if they see that the fleet, if they see that the parade's starting to slow down and people stop, we're gonna have them to enforce that they need to continue. Um, what we did in the past, what I did last year is that, um, I meet with the group before the parade. When we do roll call, give them the final, uh, update of what, what needs to happen. Uh, this dance group decided when they got up to Rockfish Road, uh, to do a twenty-minute, uh, performance. Um, and at that time of roll call, we did explain to them that if, if anybody stopped the parade, that they would not be allowed to enter the parade for the next year.
I know, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So that, that entry already knows that they can't do July, or the more Christmas and do the following year.
Yeah.
We put that stipulation out.
Uh, we were, as a group, most of us, I believe, were right out front here. And everybody thought the parade was over and they left.
Right, that's why we put the stipulation.
Remember that.
Yeah, everybody thought it was over, I mean, even we as elected officials thought it was over.
Yeah, I remember that.
So, but maybe it'll go smoother this year, there's always that one or two.
Okay, do we have, yes, sir?
You know, I'm the one asked for that to be revisited. And out, on the town parade guidelines have been approved by prior board. Requires a motion to rescind for us to approve another set of guidelines, according to your new rules. But, um, anyways, um, some of my suggestions, if we continue to have two and three-hour parades and citizens are walking off, we may have to get to a point where we do some kind of scope limitations or limit the number of entries in each division. So we're only gonna take the first twenty-five loads, we're only gonna take the first two bands, et cetera, et cetera, whatever, to limit the amount of time that's exhumed and with our street closures as well. But, uh, it's a trial and error thing, I think, and we just have to, I think the last two parades have, have gone kind of lengthy, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, that was my only concern, I've seen, like, like Commissioner Lake said, lot of people just walking off and leaving and coming up to start with the, um, old mill days, I believe, or, or no, the, uh, December.
Christmas, Christmas with it?
Festivities. So, I think it's just something we gotta, and I, I applaud everything you do. Kenny, you know that, having been the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, again, just hearing from citizens, we got a lot of backlash from the last parade. And just a way to cut the length of it a little bit, but that has to be predetermined. So, um, but I'm o- I'm okay with it the way it stands right now and, uh, I, I'll make a motion to approve it as it's written.
Have a motion to approve the town parade guidelines for our Fourth of July parade, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have discussion, consideration of resolution twenty eighteen ten amending the Town of Hope Mills Town Charter to alter the terms served by the mayor and the board of commissioners to four-year stagger terms as permitted by the North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one oh one four to be placed on the twenty eighteen election ballot and setting a date for a public hearing. So the resolution, um, is there any comments?
I'll come first, Dan.
So, the, the way we need to do it, and I spoke with the Cumberland County Board of Elections, we can get it on the November ballot. Um, all they need is seventy days to, you know, get all the, the forms printed and stuff. So they need seventy days notice to do that, which gives us plenty of time. Um, the, the order is, we really need to go through the, the process of the ru- of the ordinance that we had discussed last time and then we make the ordinance contingent upon approval by a, a majority vote in the election. So we go through, we do the, uh, we do, we do the resolution, we set the public hearing and then, um, once we've had the public hearing, you can adopt the ordinance contingent upon approval by the voters. So tonight, uh, what I would recommend y'all doing is to adopt the resolution and set a public hearing.
Okay.
If that's the direction the board wants to go.
And Mayor, make a motion to, um, approve resolution two thousand eighteen dash ten, resolution of intent by our board to consider amending the Town of Hope Mills Town Charter to alter the terms served by the board members to four-year stagger terms as permitted by North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one oh one four and North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight one oh one subsection eight. The board, um, will consider this an ordinance to amend Article Three of the Town's Charter pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one oh two.
Can I have a motion of a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
As long as the citizens have opportunity and that will be November, I don't have a problem with it. Um, I just worry that some years you might come up here and have a new mayor and five new commissioners and therefore we'll lose continuity. Uh, nobody know what's going on. Uh, so that's the only reason I would support it. Not for me, I'm getting too old.
Well, I'm also been supporting this since we went to our training and learned that the majority by three to, three to one ratio of towns and cities in the state of North Carolina have moved to this and that we need more time to be effective leaders of this town that we love so dearly.
Okay, any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Set the date for the hearing. Um, we need seventy days to get to the board of elections, so the hearing, um, needs to be by.
Well, the, the, the process, so, so what you just adopted is, is really a resolution that we, we intend to discuss this.
Right.
Um, you can go ahead and set the public hearing to allow the public to weigh in on the actual proposed ordinance. Um, once you've had the public hearing on the proposed ordinance, you can adopt the ordinance and make the adoption of the ordinance contingent. So, the next step is just the public hearing and then you will actually vote to adopt on the ordinance and then you'll send that to the board of elections. So as long as that process is done, you know, within seventy days prior to the election, we're, we'll be fine. Um.
Since we have the.
If we can do it June eighteenth?
I was gonna say, if we did the hearing on June eighteenth, would that work?
That'd be my motion, June eighteenth.
Alright, so we have a motion that we set the public hearing for this resolution on June eighteenth at the regular board time, seven P M. Okay, have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. So we'll have our hearing, uh, on changing the terms. And then at that, on that particular night, then they can vote to move this forward and that would give them more than enough time to get it to the board of elections. Okay, alrighty, thank you very much. Alright, the next thing we have is, um, discussion of the Hope Mills Lake Ordinance Lake Park Rule specifically regarding dogs on leashes. And this was again suggested by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell. Um, I think all of us have, uh, either been contacted or had something to say and I think the most recent, uh, information was that the signs are down there from two thousand three and somebody found one from before two thousand three about the fact that the dogs were not allowed. So this is just current, that this has, has been a problem or issue. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim in reference to his request for this to be on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm not meaning to wreak havoc tonight, but, um, just hearing a lot from the citizens. So, um, actually what I'm hearing is that they don't understand why the rules at the lake park are not the same as our walking track and other areas of town. And, uh, if there's a reason why we'd have one park that'd have different rules from another park in regards to the dogs. Um, a friend, a friend of mine, uh, was serious as he could be and his son's just graduated from a college in West Palm Beach, Florida. And, uh, of course, this is the extreme thing, but all the dogs in West Palm Beach, Florida are actually registered with the Parks and Rec. Their DNA is tested. And if your dog's droppings are found out there, you're sent a fine of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars, which I know in North Carolina, I think we can only go to two fifty or five hundred on fines. But, um, most of it, I mean, I, I don't know, uh, staff would know better if, uh, citizens are being compliant with the doggy bags and everything, even, uh, a lot of dogs walk on this walking track, if I'm not mistaken. Um, again, most of these, we got a lot of rules, but not a lot of time for compliance enforcement in the different areas of our parks. And, um, maybe some other issues throughout town, but we're kind of limited in staff resources, so we will have, uh, I guess, a lake park attendant beginning soon, if I'm not mistaken.
The park attendant's already started, but it's part-time hours right now, um.
And again, this was approved by the prior board, uh, the rules for the, for the lake park.
But these were, these, this rule wasn't changed. The Lake Advisory Committee, uh, reviewed these and this was one that was not, did not come across the radar and was not changed. I talked to, uh, Mr. McLean actually said that it was one that they, I guess you just left it intact 'cause it wasn't, I guess Commissioner Bellflowers would know. So it was reviewed, but, um, and the, the main thing that was, uh, as far as changes that the previous board approved were those, uh, changes that were the obvious changes that is, is referenced to, uh, permitting and also the ordinances that reference to the peers and those kinds of things were, things that have been brought up. Um, the only concern that I have is in reference to this, and, and again, I think this is because of sanitary reasons. Uh, I was asked, because of the amount of green space we have down there, that there's not so much concern about the, um, whether or not they clean it up or not. It's the fact that if it's there, you have children barefoot, uh, you have them sitting in the grass, eating and, and that, uh, there's just a concern that not everyone has a, an animal that is taken care of and that their concern was if they're on the walking track, that they could, uh, that was okay. But if you put a lot of dogs out there, uh, what would that amount to as far as waste material? So, again, um, I go back to, I don't know if they, what's, what we need to deal with as far as this ordinance. Is it something Parks and Rec needs to take another look at or?
Madam Mayor.
Is it something the Lake Advisory Committee, or is it something we just, what do we need?
Well, as you said earlier, uh, when this came before the Lake Advisory Committee and when I was the chair, um, we discussed it as a committee and we didn't have any public feedback regarding this issue at all at that, during that time period. But now, with that said, my recommendation is, is to, uh, send this to the, to the Parks and Rec Committee for recommendations to come back to the board. There's merit on both sides.
Yeah.
There, there, truly, truly, there's merit on both i- both sides of the issue with dogs in the park as more and more municipalities become pet-friendly. Out of nine people that may take their dog to a park, will obey the, the leashes, they will do the, they'll pick it up, they'll take care of, but you always have the one that's neglectful. And even since our lake park has been open, reopened, there's still people that bring their animals there, uh, to include service dogs. Um, maybe it's, maybe not only with the lake ordinance part regarding the dogs, but I think Parks and Rec Committee should look at the, uh, the issue with dogs in all of our parks. And that's why we have community committees. Uh, it's to generate that discussion from the community level and if folks were adamant about it, they could go to the Parks and Rec Committee and even join the committee. But that's my recommendation and that would be to you, Mayor, and of course, to the Mayor Pro Tim, that we give this to the, to the Parks and Rec and let them make a recommendation of which way that we should consider as a board.
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
I just look, I'd like it to be uniform.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I agree with you, that's why I say that. And you, you were chair of Parks and Rec Committee, I mean, that's what we have committees for.
I would second that, I think.
Yeah, what, what do you, I, I think the other thing is someone asked about dogs being in the lake themselves in the swimming area, 'cause there were, this past weekend, there was a couple of dogs actually in the swimming area. They had them down there, they were chasing balls or frisbees or something. And so that was, someone asked, can they go in the swimming area if they're at the park? So I guess that's, again, Parks and Rec, I think it's a good, Ms. Commissioner Edwards?
Um, I've had some comments also from citizens, but what they're saying is that, um, the lake park area is not a large park, it's a very small area. And, um, and like the, the, the grassy area is a lot smaller than it used to be too. And there was one gentleman down there that had a, and I have nothing against pit bulls or any dog, but he had a pit bull and he had it on a leash, it was a chain.
Mm-hmm.
But this seven-year-old boy got real excited and he ran up to it and it was all the owner could do was to, to keep that dog on the, on the chain. And it, and I'm not distinguishing between any particular dog or anything, but I think there's, um, the walking trail and all is a much larger area and you have more control. And they also have the, um, dog pen, two different ones. So that's the only thing I've heard.
Man, man, maybe a big good idea with some of these dogs, if they're permitted, to be muzzled, to have muzzles on them.
Yeah.
If people want to bring them out there to go, of course, that's against the dog's freedom of speech, I guess you would say.
Do that.
But they make muzzles for a reason and that's one of the reasons.
Okay, so we've got a, um.
We already have an ordinance.
Yeah, right, we've got a recommendation that we let Parks and Rec take another look at the ordinance and make any recommendations and compare the lake ordinance to the park ordinance, I guess.
Yeah.
That would be the thing. So you're putting that in form of a motion.
I am.
And you've seconded it, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, any opposed?
I raised my right hand.
You're with.
You're with us?
Okay, okay. Alrighty then. Alright, the next thing we have is discussion of water testing at the lake. And I, I guess what I'd like to do is ask if Ms. Adams has an update, 'cause I know, uh, when this was suggested, she went forward with it, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Adams before, um, Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell.
Okay, I do have an update. Um, the, um, well, as you all know, uh, issued a press release. Um, and we have, um, closed the swimming area, uh, effective on Friday, May the fourth. Um, the town's contract with mogusin mitigation, uh, will begin this month. That monitoring is to determine the dissolved oxygen temperature and water depth for the first year of impoundment, uh, per the North Carolina Division of Water Resources and United States Army Corps of Engineers. These tests indicate water quality with respect to aquatic life. With rising temperatures and abundant water file, the likelihood of bacteria in the swimming area is a concern and has been a concern. Staff has taken a water sample and the swimming area tested over the regulatory limit for fecal coliform. Staff has contacted the State Division of Water Resources Office for guidance on proper testing methods and water quality guidelines. The state indicated that the county Public Environmental Health is responsible for Class B waters, which are recreational waters, and they have contacted Cumberland County. State representative has asked that we give them time to determine proper methods and offered assistance to the town moving forward. Staff is currently awaiting a response and how to proceed. And that's my update on that.
Any questions?
And Ma- Madam Mayor, I, I spoke with Town Manager Adams, um, at some length about this issue. When I was chair of the Parks and Rec, we had discussed it at a couple of our meetings and it, I guess it wa- really wasn't r- time for it to come before the board at the time 'cause there was no lake. And, uh, of course, we caught some flack in the, uh, some of the comment sections of the paper, but the water maturity is changing as the heat is rising. Uh, when they impounded the water back in oh nine, oh eight timeframe, we did have at least one Aljay Bloom. I think, uh, Ms. Waring, I think, actually did an article, I believe. Mr. Rawls had done some testing of the water, if I remember right. But, um. But, um, main concern is, I believe, we just want to be, make all the measures to keep our citizens safe. I mean, if they, they still swim, that's gonna be on them and their liability, not the town's liability. And we've warned them not to swim. There's, there's nothing we can do to prevent anybody from jumping in a boat or a kayak up at the headwaters and coming down into our lake and jumping out of their boat and swimming all they want. There's nothing that you really can do that in public waters, you know, so, uh, and all we can do is our due diligence. And, um, try our best to keep our citizens safe. So that's why I brought it, the issue up, and I'm glad that, um, Town Manager Adams has taken that step. And I know some of the citizens are hoping it'll be back up on Memorial Day, but I think we have to, we have to make sure we do the right amount of testing before making that decision.
Yeah, I think.
Based on the experts.
I think from all indications, um, it, it's five samples within a thirty-day period, um.
So I mean, there's a s- there's a slight chance it could be opened by Memorial Day. We can't promise.
Uh, I have no way of knowing what the future testing will be.
But we've got signs down there posted now.
Yes, sir, we do, mhm.
I appreciate you d- you taking care of that, Town Manager.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, here.
If one of those tests should come back negative, is there a time period that's extended? Will it be extended another thirty days, ten days, fifteen days, or, I say one thing?
I cannot answer that until we talk to the, um, till we talk to the state representative who's supposed to be contacting the county. I, I don't know the answer to that.
But you know, we've got some activities planned down there for July fourth, so.
Yeah, I know. I know it. Um, I think one thing we're gonna have to really look at is the, the amount of geese that are down there. I think that's where part of our problem is coming from.
They're contributing.
Um, it's contributing to it, yes, very much so. Um, so we may have to look at some measures to.
Madam Mayor, I will say that the geese, you know, if we really control the feeding of them, mine have left my lake, so they're gone. They've probably come to Hope Mills, but we don't feed them on ours, so they will leave, they're, they're gonna continue.
Feeding them, yeah, and.
Well, we've got some new additions down there, the new baby geese, and this weekend, uh, they looked like they were starving, I guess, cause we had feeders back even with the signs, but, uh, we have got a family now that's, that's developing down there. So that, there is quite a lot of them.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, um, just remind this board that back in, uh, March twentieth of, uh, twenty seventeen, when I was the Lake Advisory Chair, I briefed last year's board, the prior board, um, that swimming was clearly contingent on water testing. Uh, and this was over a year ago, um, of the water testing and the quality of the water. Uh, and I just wanted to remind folks that that was a concern of ours all along. Uh, and, and that we're taking a precautionary measure. Today, when I was down at the lake with the, uh, the boat incident, there were several people down there that would just come up and ask you.
Right.
You know, what's the deal with the swimming? Is there something wrong with the water? No, we're just taking precautionary measures. We didn't think anybody would be swimming in the lake as early as April and the first part of May. That's, it's only closed because we're doing water testing quality of the water itself. It's the same thing anybody would do if you open up a pool. Before you jump in, you'd wanna check the chlorine levels to make sure it's safe. Well, that's all we're doing. So I think the, the right decision was made, precautionary measure, and whatever the testing results are, it's, it's all for the public safety.
Well, also too, if you remember, um, as part of the Lake Advisory Committee, Mark Landis had even said that,
Oh, yes, several times.
It, it may be a little while before.
We brought that up several times during the briefings down at the gazebo, and, uh, Mark Landis clearly stated, uh, that it may be a year or so before the testing would be appropriate for public swimming. Uh, and it may be. Uh, so it's not that we don't want people in the lake, it's that we want to make sure the lake is safe. It's a public lake.
I, I think there's, there's a lot of factors from, from, and, and Beth has been, uh, a big help in helping me to try to understand what happens when, you know, but, um, you know, the, the property sat empty for so long.
Yeah.
It's only been, there's only been water in it for a couple of months. We've not had a lot of huge rain events that have washed things out. The water hasn't really been moving. It's sort of been stagnant. There's a lot of factors, you know, that come into play, um, that could be affecting it, you know, so we're, that's why we want to work with them, with these agen- with the agency. The state can help us maybe, you know, come up with some ideas to, to try to mitigate some of these factors that are affecting, that are affecting it.
Falls Lake, not last summer, for wat- water quality issues. I mean, we can't be the only ones in the state asking for this kind of testing to be done.
They just closed White Lake, didn't they?
Yeah. Well, I think the, that, the, the fact that you can still use it for the kayaking, canoeing, and those kinds, and the fishing, I think those recreation opportunities are there, so I don't think our community should get completely upset with the fact that we're having to do water testing, cause you can still do those kinds of things. It's just the swimming and having, um, you know, especially I think having children down there, they're very susceptible that it's just, I'd rather err on the side of being safe and caution.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep.
Well, appreciate, appreciate what you're doing with that, and then, um, of course, I'm sure as we get updates, we can keep us abreast of where we're going with it. Alright, the next item is under, um, new business is item, uh, C, Discussion of Honoring and Recognizing Dedicated Service to the Town by Those Who Have Passed. And this was, uh, requested by Commissioner Bellflowers.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, when I, when I was talking about this, I think it was an email between myself and Commissioner Legman. And, um, I think that's how the, the traffic went, and then it ended up on the agenda, but I, I didn't know during that time, I didn't know about this ordinance, um, that's included in tonight's agenda packet. So I really don't have any comments about it, other than I'm more knowledgeable now about this ordinance, and it was passed by a prior board, and, uh, and it, and it's an excellent ordinance that deals with, uh, the recognition of so many community volunteers that do so much for our town.
Any other questions? Okay. Alrighty, next we moved, uh, by recommendation of Commissioner Leg, item D and E from Consent Agenda. Item D is Consideration of Approval of the Street Improvement Project Change Order Number One with Highland Paving Company and the amount of a hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred dollars and Budget Amendment Number Thirty-One. And I guess, um,
I'm gonna have Public Works Director Hector Cruz come up and
Why you have a question?
Answer any questions that you have concerning this matter.
I'll turn it over to Commissioner Leg.
Thank you. The original contract on this Highland paving contract was four hundred and thirty-five thousand plus dollars. Are these reasonable people who are bidding these jobs? I mean, they're asking for a twenty-nine percent increase. I mean, look, he- here's my point of view. I was in building for forty-three years. If I go over to anybody's house to give them a price on a job, I'm stuck at that price. If I make a mistake on my part, that's just tough. I have to live with it. I just don't think it's right for us to pay that kind of extra money on a job. Don't we have a clause in the contract that this is what the bid is? I mean, who knows that? I don't. I know what mine said, but I guess Mr. Cruz will go answer this, I guess.
Right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, the amount, it's, uh, over a hundred and twenty-something thousand dollars. I don't have a copy of that with me, but, uh,
Four hundred and thirty-five plus a hundred and
That's a base, that was a base contract, yeah. When that contract was made, it was awarded back in the late summer, early fall. We had some, uh, streets that called for crack seal. And, uh, because Highland Paving, which is the lowest bidder, uh, in addition to that, it was, uh, Barn Hill, who was extremely higher than that. Uh, we wanted to meet a threshold based on a projection that we had set aside, uh, between conversations and discussions with, uh, finance, uh, for what we need to get paved. Uh, crack seal on some streets was left pending, uh, in addition to another activities that were supposed to take place on, on a few of those streets. Uh, we get rolling, uh, a few months ago with the contract, and every activity, every activity that was on that spreadsheet that was based on the priorities, uh, per paving condition survey, uh, took place, even the ones that we had pending. So it was not the contractor asking for more money, it's the town had a set of streets that we, that were part of the base bid, and we included those streets, uh, to get them done. So that's why the cost, it's elevated. Right now, we have six, six sech- sections of streets that are milled, uh, and cannot be paved until we get this amount approved.
Don't we have guidelines, restrictions, and thresholds as far as having to rebid something? If a contractor doesn't cover it in his initial bid?
Like, like I say, this is already stuff that we had on the base bid, but we had it pending, but we made it happen. The town made this happen. We made this happen. We need to get those streets taken care of. That's what happened.
This is ac- I think what Hector's trying to say, that this is extra work that we, that we asked them to do for us.
This is not.
This is an addition.
This is an additional.
It's not additional. It was part of the base, but we had it pending because the amount at the beginning was too high, so we worked on the number that we thought we was gonna work for this contract to, to be done within that projected ideal budget cost.
The appearance is, we get our foot in the door, we get the job, and then we ask for a budget amendment and get all the money.
Well, that's not the appearance. It's not what took place. They're not asking for additional, additional work. We're going off the same base list.
Same base list, but they didn't bid that. Why should we pay them for it? Because they did it?
It's work that needs to get done.
At our taxpayers' expense. Twenty-nine percent, Mr. Cruz.
I understand that, sir. I did those numbers.
Twenty-nine percent.
Town Manager Adams said that work we asked to be done, that was, sounds like a contingency in the contract.
The, additional crack sealing that, additional crack sealing that?
The, there's nothing additional. Everything was part of this initial contract. Nothing has been changed. We had it, we were holding back, but we ma- but, but we made it happen, cause we had to take care of the streets.
Aren't we required to bid that again?
No, we're not.
Not required to, that's probably the initial.
Then we should never have awarded a contract that was not complete. We did that with the dam.
We had a contingency built into the dam.
Then this needs to be the same way then. Uh, i- it's hard to set up here and spend, uh, a, a twenty-five, a twenty-nine percent increase of taxpayers' money for something that we let go, that we, we didn't do. I mean, I know a lot of the jobs I bid, I wish I could've went back and said, hey, I missed this, but I wasn't able to do that. I had to eat it. Uh, that's all I've got to say on that.
Any other?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
In the scope of work, did, did the scope of work change any? On the o- o- original award of the contract?
This list and the taskings in this list are the same from day one. We were holding back, cause we anticipated a high cost initially. We were holding back. The town, we were holding back. But when we finally got the contractor in line to get this job done, we told him, go ahead and take ca- take care of everything that is on the list.
And who were the other bidders and what were the amounts?
I don't have the paper. I mean, Barn Hill was the other one.
It was only two. Barn Hill was, was, was Barn Hill higher than?
This was the second one that we bid, yeah.
Was it a lot higher than adding the twenty-six?
Eight, nine hundred thousand?
Oh, yeah.
Something crazy.
But they were responsible bidders. If they bid everything, evidently this company didn't bid everything that's on the list to be bid.
They bid everything. We negotiated at the beginning to get a set amount.
Maybe Drew can help explain.
What we had, for instance, and I don't have the contract or the list of streets in front of me. Just say we had eight streets that needed repaving. We asked for the bids, they came in very high. We said, with those bids, we're only gonna be able to do five of these streets. So we awarded to Highland Paving. And then when the actual contract was done and everything, it's like, well, you know what? Because their bid came in so good, we're gonna go ahead and do all eight streets. Go ahead and add the three others back to it. That's what this change order is, is getting all eight streets done instead of just five.
What's it got to do with crack sealing? If it's eight more, three extra streets, crack sealing, is what he said.
More to do the extra three streets. So now we're doing every street, like Hector said, we're doing all the streets on the list instead of just a portion of them.
They don't take the precautionary measures to seal the cracks in a street before they pave it?
Well, they are doing that. That's part of the entire contract.
Yeah, I think so.
We're just getting eight streets done instead of five.
It's not that they've done anything wrong.
But, but let me, let me ask, Ma- Madam Mayor.
I think our attorney has a comment to make.
I, I think as I understand it, this four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar amount, correct me if I'm wrong, that was not the original bid for all of the work. That's what we negotiated them down to based on a lower amount of work than the original.
Yeah, that's the question I was going at.
We're now asking them to go back, not, because the four hundred and thirty-five was not for the full amount of work. That's what we negotiated them down to. We're now asking them to go back up and do all of the work. That's what the increase represents, is the increase in amount of work that we are asking them to do.
So what was Highland's bid for all the streets?
I don't have that with me, sir.
That, that's the other question I have. I mean, the, I want, the original bids, and then we negotiated them down.
But this is lower than that original bid.
They've already worked thirty-two thousand dollars over the initial bid.
Yes, they did.
And the Waring Street, which I had been on, the manholes are, the man covers are raised and a mess right now, so they've done.
That's part of the work that is still pending.
Why would they go over the price of work? Without getting the approval from us first?
By the time they got to the point where they got, and we got the ton- tonnage tickets of all the paving that had been done so far, that's when we cut up to that.
I gotta say that it shouldn't be this confusing personally. If this were my checking account, this would not be okay. This would just not be okay. And twenty-nine percent? A hundred and twenty-six thousand on a, on a consent agenda is also unreasonable for me. But the roads are left a mess. So it has to be done. So we're, you know, they've started work and left roads where now they have to be done. Almost to, so you're stuck. You're being held captive to get the work done by them. Is the way it appears for us, whether.
And I'm just trying to make sure I'm getting this right, but we, this is work that we asked them to do, so.
How do you add, we didn't ask them, the board did not.
We asked them to bid it.
Did the bid, as I understand it, that was, we had requested that we bid out the entire project. In order to save costs, we said, okay, don't do the full pro- don't bid the full proj- In order to save costs, we said, okay, don't do the full proj- don't bid the full project, just bid a certain amount of it. That four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars is the lower amount of work. That had, so the, the board had approved, I guess, the original scope of work, which was the entire bid. We're now going back up to that original scope of work that had been previously approved. And the increase, the one twenty-six increase is. For that additional amount of work that we're now asking them to do, which is still within.
Which is still part of the same original list.
Bid that we got for the full scope of work. I don't know if that helps, but that's at least my understanding of it.
And the way I look at it as far as the explanation is that we're, these were on our list, our priority list of streets to be paved. And we're getting the job done, the entire job done for less than it would've been done if we had put all of them out there at one time. So we're actually, in the long run, we're saving money because the higher bid for the whole project would've been much more than what this is. And I guarantee you, the people that are on these streets, um, probably not only will appreciate getting their roads completed, but will appreciate the fact that they've been paid. I don't know that, um, I don't know that. There's any way of saying that this should be done any other way because we're getting, for the dollars, we're actually getting a bargain. It's what I'm looking at. And I'm basing that just on what I'm hearing. And I might, I mean, that's, in other words, we got the whole job done for probably half of what the full job would've been bid for. If you base it just on the two bids that came in with Barn Hill being very high. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, Madam Mayor.
I understand the process.
Yeah, I would just like to know the numbers. I mean, that's, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I do.
Well, right now, I think what we're looking at is we have streets that have already been said are not finished, that we need to get finished. And probably we've got them here, and if we allow them to stop. And ask them to come back after we go through all this, that price is gonna go higher because they gotta break, pull a crew back in. I think we've been through this before with saying, telling somebody, oh, wait a minute, we don't want you to do this right now because we gotta look through something. Cause again, the recommendation is here before us and the streets are on the list of streets to be paved. But I guess I, I throw that back out there because I understand what, I understand the process. So I guess any other comments?
I, I see what the process is. I think it would've been a little better if the explanation was, was more detailed in the, in the paragraph. This was the original bid for all the work. But we went back and negotiated it down to say, well, okay, what do you, what can you do for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand? Well, they're not gonna do it all. But the original bid, and they were lower than the other bidder, so we started off with the four twenty-nine. They got involved in the contract. They started to go, there was overages, I understand, now at thirty-two thousand. So net, so already you got a change order coming.
In addition to that, if it helps understand some of this, this is not straight up, yeah, just because you, we get an estimate. About how much tonnage of asphalt you're gonna utilize, doesn't mean you're gonna run through that exact number. It doesn't work that way when it comes to asphalt reconstruction. It doesn't work that way. Might work that way some other type of construction, but not on this.
Well, I understand that, Hector. But I mean, you, you're saying that we're saving money, but I don't think the board knows that we are. And the reason we don't know that, that we are is because we don't see the original numbers through. We don't see the original numbers through. And that's my point, that that would've been most helpful in this explanation. It would've probably stayed on the consent. Just do a little better job on, on putting the numbers here so we know that. You know that, but we don't know that. And that's what the question is.
Do we know when this was put on the original, uh, agenda for approval? Do we know?
August, September, somewhere in there.
August or September.
So would it be possible to, to quickly look and see what that looked like on that agenda?
And I think at that time, we put the negotiated, I don't know if the bid tab is on that packet.
But you would have, you'd have the information. I'm just curious if that would be something you could, so that we don't hold this project up and have those people that are, uh, now with potholes and streets that are not complete.
Well, thanks, Mayor. Drew, you see where, you see where I'm going. You see where I'm going. I mean, this is an action that happened to prior board months ago. And all we're just looking for is some numbers of the justified, that's all. That's, that's really, that's what I'm looking for. I can't speak for the whole board, but you see what I'm talking about.
I realize what the mayor's talking about. The streets are torn, manholes are up in the air. But if you recall, back when we were trying to get the contract ready for the dam. We had people out in Fairway Forest, and they didn't care about whether the lake ever came back or not.
Yeah.
Had put racetrack down there, do this, do that. Because they weren't involved in it. They weren't a, a property owner on the lake or someone who had a passion about that lake. I guess what I'm trying to get at now, some of the same people don't care what kind of condition those streets are in.
Yeah, because they don't live on those streets.
They don't live on it.
They don't live in that neighborhood.
Fingers at somebody.
Yeah, they don't live in that neighborhood. Yeah.
Might not be us. I don't know.
Well, they're, all total, we've done, uh, several other communities, not just this one community for paving streets. There's, there's been other projects that have been completed. So this, this particular project is not, it's one of many that have been completed. Can we hold that thought? And wait to see if they get any information? And then I'm just curious, since this is a FEMA reimbursement for item E. If we could answer that question, this money is coming from FEMA for item E, so.
Are we guaranteed that? Are we guaranteed we're getting that money back from FEMA?
The FEMA?
It's the.
The road repairs?
Oh, yeah.
The ten thousand dollar change order.
Yeah, that, FEMA reimbursements, it's just a matter of submitting them and you have to do the budget amendment in order to do that, so.
We have to have the budget repaid.
Yeah. Yeah, FEMA reimbursed it. So is there any questions about that one that we can take care of as we wait and that won't, um?
You're talking about item E?
I would say this.
Okay.
I would say this. I don't like to see these kind of numbers on a consent of agenda.
Okay, this item, item.
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars on one, ten thou- you're talking about a hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars on a, a consent agenda.
Well, the ten, there's two separate items, uh, Commissioner Legg, and the second. All right, the second item is ten thousand dollars. And this item, the description for this item is the current contract with Charles Hughes Construction is for an amount of four hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars. During the construction of the embankment of East Patterson Street, an additional section of the embankment had to be stabilized due to unsuitable soils in the area. The cost of this additional work is nine thousand five hundred seventy dollars. During the repairs of damaged section of the street on Davis Street, an additional section of asphalt was removed to have a full width section of asphalt placed over repaired section. Of the road with an additional cost of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the removal of asphalt. These two changes to the scope of work total ten thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars bring the total cost of the contract of four hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. So what has happened here is as they worked, other things were uncovered that had to be completed. And again, this amount is from FEMA. So this is reimbursable. And so if there's not any questions, this is.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve, uh, change order number one with the Charles Hughes Construction Company in amount of ten thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. You need a second motion on the budget amendment or same motion?
Well, I'll second it. I'll second it anyway.
Yeah.
I'll just go ahead and second it anyway.
Attorney, here's a.
Okay, do we need a, do we, can one, do we need a?
Do you need, is that okay to do in one motion or two motions needed? With the, uh, this item E here with the Charles Hughes Construction and budget amendment? Do you need a budget amendment in a separate motion or it's continuous motion?
It can be the same.
Same motion. Okay, then, uh, then I'll continue with my motion to, um, also approve budget amendment number thirty-two.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Yep, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? So it'll be a four-one on that one.
I don't like, see, that kind of number come on a consent agenda.
Okay, now the, now back to where we are. Were we able to locate any information?
We're looking for it. Might I suggest we take like a ten minute break?
Okay, let's take a, we'll have, let's have a ten minute recess and we'll reconvene. So let's recess while they research this item for us. Mr. Holland and Mr. Cruz, if you will.
All right, what you got copies of earlier from the town manager is the, um, copy of the per unit cost that we originally bid out. And you see the two bids we had from Highland and, um, what was the other one?
Barn Hill.
Barn Hill. Okay. As you can see, Highland paving is a whole lot lower than Barn Hill. And what we did was, at the time that we did the, um, um, that was approved, we had four hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget. But we had a long list of streets that would have cost more than four hundred and fifty that we wanted to do. So we asked Highland. Get the cost based on our street list below the four hundred and fifty thousand. So in order to complete streets, he was able to do that. And the contract then was approved at the four hundred and. Four hundred thirty-four thousand, whatever that contract price was, four thirty-five. So that was approved. And we signed it in August of two thousand seventeen, uh, for the four hundred thirty-five thousand. So then, once they got into the work and noticed that some of the, um, what'd you call that? The crack seal and the different things and the, the, I guess, the asphalt that had to be taken up. And how much had to be put back down again. It was hard to stay within that four thirty-five. So we thought, well, for this quote. And for what's needed to go ahead and finish the rest of the roads that we wanna do, that insinuated this change order for the hundred twenty-six. So, uh, doing that change order is not only going to complete all the original roads that we asked for. But the other roads that we had had them back off of the amount so we can finish. Everything that was on the list, not just a portion that we, when we asked them to get it below four fifty. This is adding back to that what it would've been if we hadn't asked them to back off of that price.
Question.
Okay.
And I've already been scolded for what I'm doing tonight, but like I said, not my money. It's those people out there. When you say they had to take up extra asphalt. Didn't the contractor know he has to take up that asphalt to, from the get-go?
They do. And it's called an estimate.
Then why are we having to pay for it now? Cause they used it and went over. I mean, why do our residents have to pay that fee for contract, or the contract on, they know they had to take the asphalt up when they bid the job. But it's not in their contract, so they add it on, got their foot in the door. And they know they can request a, a budget amendment and, and get paid.
I might be able to speak to that. If you look at the, um, bid tabulation, when, when they talk about the asphalt, it's, that's in the bid estimation. They estimated one oh two, the other one estimated one twenty. I think, as I understand it, we're at one ten. So both, both of them, you know, we're estimating what they were, how much asphalt they were gonna have to pull out. Uh, both were, were pretty close. Actually, it, it looks like Highland was closer on their estimate than, than Barn Hill was. Um, and that's, you know, I think the nature of these types of things is that you estimate, you're not gonna look at a road and say, okay, here's, you know, exactly how much asphalt we have to take. You have to do an estimate. And that's, that's what this is.
I'm just saying, as long as these people have been around, they should know. They're not rookies.
They're, they're not. I loo- it looks like they, you know, both, both of these people estimated one oh two and one twenty. We're at one ten. Like I said, it, that's, that's a pretty good estimate as far as I can tell. I, I don't do that type of work, but. It seems to be pretty close to what it was.
What you're talking about there, you said one oh two and one twenty. Is that for new asphalt or is, is that for taking up the old asphalt?
It's asphalt overlay. Cost per ton.
So is milling the asphalt?
That's by square yards.
Is that taking up the, all the asphalt or grinding this, the base off of it?
It's, on some streets, we did mill it, we mill the edges. So we don't create a higher edge that will interfere with the water runoff on roll-up curbs. And some streets, because their conditions, we did full width milling. And the milling was just one inch thick.
Done, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh, one thing that I'd like to recommend to the board, and I did not scold Commissioner Legg, what I requested was we get our agendas, uh, early. We got it on Thursday. So on Thursday, in the future, when we get our agendas, I would request the board to look at these items that you have questions about. And request them to be put on new business so that then the research can be done. And then we don't put everybody, uh, on a spot that we have to go look for, for answers. This is not something needs to be done necessarily, then have to be done by closed doors. It's just by moving it to another location on the agenda, we can, uh, take it up in a different manner. So budget amendments, uh, things that were on the consent agenda, uh, if we can do that in advance, then that would give our town staff from, uh, Thursday until Monday evening to respond. And I think that would be nicer, uh, to our staff and it would be easier for us time-wise. Um, is there any other questions that you have for, uh, Mr. Cruz or for Mr. Holland or Ms. Adams or our attorney?
I got one quick question.
Okay.
Was there any damage sustained from the, uh, dam contractors on Lakeview or Lake Shore from their trucks and everything?
On Lakeview, but we assessed that and it was repaired already.
Madam Mayor, I only have one recommendation. I think in the future, and I, and I said something about it early. I think in the future, I would like to recommend that any change orders not be placed on the consent agenda. Going forward on our main agenda. I, I just, I, I feel strong about it and I'd just like to make that recommendation.
Change to our rules of procedure for our board?
Well, I don't know. I mean, any change orders shouldn't be on a consent.
It's noted.
It's noted. And you can, and you can, um, as I said, we get the agendas on Thursday.
Yep.
If you see something on consent that you do not want to be there, move it to new business. And that can be done by a simple, uh, method of changing the agenda before we get it on Monday.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve, uh, the street improvement project change order number one with Highland paving amount one hundred twenty-six one and budget amendment number thirty-one.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
I am approving this work only because of the people left in disarray.
Okay, and all those opposed? Okay, so do we have a?
I vote for it.
Okay.
For basically the same reason she said, because we got ourselves in a jam and tore the streets up. Now we gotta fix them.
Okay, so we have the approval of this, um, request. All right, next we have on our agenda, um. We are moving to street closures. Well.
Yep. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's, the, uh, celebration committee for the Fourth of July. Uh, celebration for the Town of Hope Mills. Uh, we're gonna need some street closings to make everything function properly. And, uh, the mayor has more of those days and times than I do. So I'm gonna ask her if they'll present those, if, if she will present those in case the board has to vote on them.
Okay, the, the towns or town streets, the first would, but would be that we're requesting to close Lakeview. Uh, on June twenty-ninth through July fifth. And the reason for this is to, uh, part of our celebration will actually be on Lakeview. And we want to be able to, uh, we, we know that our citizens know an alternate way, a pathway. But that way we can, uh, spread out the venue so that we can have more people down there. Yes, sir.
Do you mean, um, Lakeview up to Lake Shore?
Yes.
Do you mean um, Lakeview up to Lake Shore, up from Main Street to Lake Shore on Lakeview?
Up to Lake Shore.
Just over the sign, just over the sign.
Just the bridge, just the area, the bridge area. It would be so that you would have access, the Clifton Forge sign back to Main Street. And that area then we could be using, we'd still have, th- we'll be doing these events um, on Saturday through um, July fourth. And the idea is that we'll still work with Dr. Rayner on those dates, but we're, in the evening time especially, we wanna have the venue so we can be spread out the whole time. Also, we want to be able to close Trade Street by four thirty on June thirtieth. And that would be for the street dance um, on Trade Street. We're also asking and requesting, because of the ti- type of events that we're hosting and the things that are going on at the lake and the people that are involved, that we close the lake parking lot. And that would be for the uh, entire time with the understanding that uh, on the dates that, we do have, we've sold fifteen boat permits that do not um, live on the lake.
What, what was the date for that?
The date for that would be the June twenty-ninth through uh, July fifth. Now, the reason for, well, open it up July fifth, but after the July fourth festivities, the reason for that is that parking area will also be staging. Uh, we've got um, Heroes on the Water coming on the uh, July first and the quit, and the, not, yeah, on Sunday, July first, right? I got my date strange, yeah. Alright, the day that Heroes on the Water are coming, they're gonna need that area because they're bringing canoes and kayaks and that kind of stuff, and they don't really, the people that live on the lake, we're not having an issue with, but people with permits to bring additional boats in, there's a concern for safety because of what are the things they're doing. The day that we do the cardboard boat races, there's also a concern on that day, which is Saturday. Uh, so again, people that live on the lake and have boats and, and vehicles or whatever, they're fine. It's just those people that might wanna come from outside Hope Mills, uh, we don't wanna add uh, possibly another issue because we're trying to deal with the safety factor, because we have water events planned. So we'll be closing the parking lot. We're gonna request, and we're taking care of this, we're gonna request from BB and T, First Citizens, uh, Hope Mills Saw and Moe, um, and all those areas that have parking lots, that on the weekends when they're closed, if they'll allow us to use those parking spaces. And then um, making sure that we make the area for items like porta toilets and those kinds of things. There's all sorts of things that we need in access to the lake, so we're trying to make best use of the area down there. So Lakeview, uh, the parking lot at the lake, and then uh, Trade Street just for that one evening.
Make a motion to approve the mayor's request.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. And we will have, I was gonna tell this to uh, the general public too, after tonight, we have most of the events uh, finalized. They're gonna be on our website tomorrow, we hope, that's the plan. And then we'll start, we've already got the, there's the Miss Fourth of July beauty pageant, uh, we've already had some applicants being involved in that. That's the weekend prior. We've got the cardboard boat races on June thirtieth with the kickoff with the ribbon cutting for the pier. We have the street dance on Saturday night. Sunday, we've got Heroes on the Water, which is uh, veterans and um, they have kayaks and canoes and fishing, and what they're gonna be doing is uh, again, you have to sign up to be a part of it, but that's gonna be special. That evening at six, we have church at the lake and our local churches are providing uh, musical entertainment. And then on Monday, we have um, jazz and art at the lake. And we have FTCC's jazz band, have a jazz quintet uh, that'll be performing. We have artists that are gonna be coming and you can, uh, they'll actually uh, produce art at the lake and you can buy from them. Uh, we're making it a, a big event for jazz and art. And then on, on, we have beach music the next day at the lake, and we're having, the Chamber is helping us co-sponsor that. And then of course, then everything we normally do um, for the Fourth of July, which will be, again, we'll have music and bands and uh, the idea is to make it a five-day event and we'll have more information coming out. But uh, the road closures are to help with traffic and also to spread the venue out. And we will have some food trucks down there also with other activities going on. And that's all I have. So next we have our manager's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the design of the three options for phase two of the lake park, Mr. Stephen Fleming has contacted the surveying team and work has begun with typographic survey of the site. Um, in regards to the Johnson Street sidewalk, McGill Associates presented public work staff with seventy-five percent drawings for a preliminary review. Review has been conducted and the firm will continue with the design process. The utilities portion of the project has not yet been done. This, this portion's expenses will be covered directly by PWC. Rockfish Road sidewalk, concurrence documents were sent on April the twentieth to the DOT Division Office. Damaged areas from Hurricane Matthew. Work completed to date on East Patterson Street, completed but not open for traffic as the area is still utilized for stockpiling of materials. Davis Street has been completed, Thoroughbred Drive is completed. River Road contractor is working on relocation of PWC water lines before existing culvert is replaced. Downstream monitoring system with moguson mitigation incorporated. Mr. Gerald Potter made a visit today to inspect the eel ladder, which is his design, and also to install monitoring system, a monitoring system to collect water samples on the downstream portion by the sewer crossing area in the water. We are continuing with the eel monitoring and basket inspections twice a week through June, June fifteenth. The total count as of today's date is eleven eels. Uh, United States Army Corps of Engineers visit for dam site and eel monitoring inspection is scheduled for Bay tenth at eleven o'clock. Ms. Emily Greer will be visiting from the Wilmington office. Items that were to be corrected at the dam, ASI and landscape sub, and the landscape subcontractor visited the site on April the twentieth. Fill dirt was placed on low spots on the top of the dam, left and right, and on the downstream low drainage areas, left and right. Reseeding took place immediately after and was completed on April the twenty-first. Staff is maintaining the irrigation of the reseated areas. In response to some complaints, an email has been sent to Mr. Frank D. West Junior, Division Traffic Engineer, inquiring about changing the speed limit from forty-five miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour on the no- northbound lane before North Main Street and the Camden, Camden Road intersection. It is thirty-five on the southbound lane in that particular location. There's just a small strip where it's, it turns to forty-five, and so the idea is to keep it, or where it turns to forty-five, I'm sorry. The idea is to keep it consistent, so we've asked for guidance if they would um, look into um, to doing that for us as a request from the town. Um, Benchmark Planning Services, which is the third party um, that we are contracting with for the Cumberland County um, assessment, planning assessment. A meeting is tentatively scheduled for this Thursday, May the tenth, from two to five. And I believe that Mayor Warner had, has asked that Commissioner Bellflowers be the liaison, the, the uh, board liaison. And he has indicated he's available um, that afternoon.
I can make that, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Uh, the mayor did bring up about the building business rally, uh, that is scheduled for Tuesday, May the twenty-second. The actual event is from three to seven PM, and the Town of Hope Mills is partnering with PWC in this initiative. Um, we will have a um, a booth at that location as well. And Mr. Fallon Proctor from the TJ Robinson Life Center has asked for a follow-up meeting possibly next week and possibly on-site with um, the board and um, Finance Director Drew Holland, myself, and Stormwater Administrator Beth Hu- Beth um, Brown. So I don't know what your availability is next week, but it doesn't look very good, does it? With everything going on, but I thought I'd put that out there. I can call him and get more details. Um, this was just today, he contacted us for asking for a follow-up meeting.
We might need a little more lead time.
And he did indicate, well, he did indicate to Ms. Gilstad that they have secured funding. Now, what that means, I don't know. I didn't have an opportunity to call him back this afternoon. And that was all I have for my manager's report. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I just have one question. In um, leaning forward this week with benchmarking, what were the, the comments from the uh, the planning meeting that occurred what, a week or so ago? The joint, I think you guys had a joint planning meeting? What was the comments or the results of that one, of that meeting?
Um, it was a little contentious at times, um, but I think that everybody came to the, to the conclusion that um, we can probably come to a resolution.
Okay, so benchmo- so the benchmark meeting this Thursday is gonna entertain those?
Start that process.
It's gonna start that process of the resolution? Okay.
And w- there were representatives here from um, DOT and from the state, Stormwater.
Okay.
And I believe that staff spoke with them and interacted with them after, kind of a little bit during, but more after the meeting.
Okay, that, that's the only question I have.
Alright, next we have our com- committee liaison updates, so I'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell with Historic Preservation Commission.
Yeah, actually, we didn't have a meeting in May. Our next meeting is June thirteenth, on Wednesday, usually at five o'clock.
Alrighty, and Commissioner Edwards with Lake Advisory.
We didn't have a quorum, so we didn't have a meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Legg, Appearance Committee.
Uh, Appearance Committee did not meet last month.
Okay, Commissioner Larson, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, we're gonna meet just to voice, uh, to vote their officer in, and Kenny has gone, so I'm not sure what happened with that meeting, cause I was in the hospital, so.
Okay. And then Commissioner Bellflowers.
Mayor, the Veterans Affairs um, Commission did meet on April twenty-sixth. And during their discussion, uh, they were discussing um, the upcoming Memorial Day celebration events in the lake park. There was also a lot of discussion about the Homecoming Six events uh, that are going on and a number of um, the members of the Lake Affairs Commission uh, attended the uh, Heroes Homecoming Six meeting as well. And they talked about the, the three nameplates that have been ordered to go on the monument for part of the Memorial Day ceremony uh, event. And that was mainly what they talked about. Next, the Rule Act will be meeting on Thursday, May seventeenth, beginning at eleven thirty. Uh, and I think that's, this meeting is at the uh, Spring Lake Family Resource Center besides the library. And, and Mayor, I, I respectfully would like to tell you that I'm gonna be unable to make that because that is FTCC graduation day and I have a role uh, in graduation. So I'm not gonna be able to make the Rule Act quarterly meeting on May seventeenth.
Is there someone that could go for uh, Commissioner Bellflowers to that meeting?
Was it, Commissioner Edwards was on before, who was on before, was that on?
Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner Marley.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're kinda familiar with it?
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you the, the letter. I'll give you the letter. Who, whoever it is gets the letter.
No, I can't go.
I think we're all faced with the same situation for, uh, is that June seventeenth?
May seventeenth.
May seventeenth.
I think I'm good. I think I can go, I think.
You can. I cannot.
I guess if it wasn't for, you know, graduation, I, you know, I'd be there.
I, I can go.
I mean, I'd.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so that is that meeting. Um, I also attended the uh, Heroes Homecoming Mayor, me- meeting, uh, Mayor as well as you did. Um, and if you'd like me to report on that, or if you'd like to report on that.
I'd like for you to report.
Either way, I'll, I'm, I'll read a little bit about it. It's, it's pretty lengthy. Uh, then it, yeah, with, with this meeting, we're talking about um, uh, the events that's gonna be planned for the huge event that's coming up, November ninth through twelfth. And the role that we'll have uh, as Hope Mills into this planning event. Some of the ideas that were floated around from the, uh, members of their Veterans Affairs Commission, to include myself and, and you, and yourself too, Mayor, was that um, we're looking at uh, doing something with warriors on the water. Uh, we're also looking at um, contacting Millstone again for some uh, some films that they'll, some pictures that they'll run during this time period for, for our veterans. We're also looking at something as a community that's, that may have a lot of significances that uh, the reading of the names of our Hope Mills veterans from World War One forward uh, in honoring all of the service veterans that uh, are from Hope Mills. Uh, there's been a lot of comments about that, when a lot of the other municipalities really like that idea, and I think they're gonna do it. They're gonna jump on doing it. We're gonna continue doing uh, the missing man table display. Uh, and these were just some of the basic ideas that were brought up um, in conjunction with a whole list of, of opportunities and ideas that will be uh, presented at our next meeting, which is coming up on Friday, May eighteenth uh, at the headquarters library building. And then uh, the committee has asked that all municipalities will be final with their recommended projects by June twenty-second. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I also not only attended that, but I've had a FAMPO meeting, which we're having another FAMPO meeting, May twenty-third. Uh, they're now doing the, the point system and trying to determine uh, the prioritize, prioritization of roads. And they also showed us the, what they're may do at the Rockfish Camden uh, intersection. There's two or three proposals. We'll be getting some information on that for the town. Also, um, the plans moving forward for Rockfish Camden and Goffview. Uh, our Main Street uh, right now, there, we asked that question and about when is it gonna be complete? And they're in process of uh, working out the pro- the situation with the owner of the property. Also, the um, cuts in the road for driveways up in that area. Uh, they want to see if they can't get some lateral, so that you don't have to have so many driveways in that particular area. But there's just some issues that have to be taken care of, and it's not a Hope Mills issue, it's a DOT. And property owners, so that until that's handled, um, you know, it's, it's gonna just be one of those things that we'll keep pushing them, but we hope to complete it soon. We also received information, each of you should have received a letter in reference to plans for uh, fifty-nine going out to the new bridge that'll be put in, and they want input from any commissioner or elected official. So if you looked at that and you have something that you'd like to say, there's a, an address you can, um, an email that you can submit. Um, also, we had our Mayor's Coalition meeting. This is a, a, a super meeting that we had in reference to uh, unity. The, all mayors were there and we also uh, feel very comfortable now that we're moving forward with some type of uh, agreement for sales tax distribution. We're hoping that we'll continue our same agreement, but at least we're all at the table, uh, including the med, the Fayetteville Mayor. Uh, we also had a conversation about, we've never had all of the elected officials in Cumberland County at the same event. That we've had events where we've had representatives, but we've never had the entire elected body. So on August the third at eight AM, and this will be the, it's the Mayor's Coalition next meeting, but they're inviting every commissioner, every alderman, everybody in elected spot and for our municipalities to come to that meeting at eight AM. The county commissioners are going to host through the League of Municipalities uh, ethics training. There'll be county-wide ethics training that they believe, even though we've been to it, doesn't hurt for a refresher. And then um, when we-
And then um when we uh before we leave that meeting, they'll also serve us, uh they'll have breakfast and probably lunch included. But the idea is they want us to be able to uh look at, talk to, and find out what's going on in the other communities. And also, the conversation was had. We've got ninety acres of a golf course that we're getting ready to do something with and plan for. They're planning a recreational park over maybe off of um where, give me the road. On the other side of town. What's the road they're looking at, the property for um the public park that they might do a baseball stadium? Yeah, but anyway, what, the idea is if we were looking at doing a facility over here and they're looking at doing something over there, why not have it so that instead of it being the same purpose, that we nega- we talk to each other and find out, if y'all gonna do um baseball over in Hope Mills, then maybe we do soccer over there. So that you could have, the whole county would benefit. But the idea is all municipalities coming together and also sharing ideas about economic development for the entire county. It's really exciting because of the fact that the entire county is talking. And they're all talking about ways that we can improve the entire county and how we can get more funding and more uh opportunities for the entire county. So if you'll put it on your calendar, there'll be more information coming. But it is August the third, it is eight AM, and it is hosted by Fedville. Uh the venue right now will probably probably move to the Crown uh rather than being where we normally have the Mayor's Coalition Meeting. But um but anyway, that's, I think that's important. And that's all I have in reference to uh the committees I've been to. Any, then we have any um staff comments?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, official comments?
Mayor, I've got one, got a couple of things. One of them, and I left it out in in the Veterans Affair Commission, and I'm just, I just wanna just ask the question of uh the VFW back in November, December, you know, we ordered this this large bench to go on the pier. And we paid nine hundred dollars for it, and it's an eight-foot bench. And we've had it in our shed since November, December. And we would like to, we would like to to have it installed. And and so my request is, where would where would the town like to have it or put it? Because Heroes Homecoming Six is coming up, and it's it's a distinct possibility that we will order another one. You know, but we don't know what to do with it. I think one recommendation was that it went to um uh the Lake Advisory Committee. So I'm asking, can this be something that can go to the Parks and Rec Committee for a placement, location, that we can just deliver it?
Can we not just place it?
What's the material made out of?
I mean, we're, the idea was that we kinda needed a little bit of a plan for where the seating was gonna be. And.
What kind of materials the bench made out of?
I think it's since an iron bench, it's.
There is no seating.
Ri- rather than.
On the pier, isn't it?
I'll place it. Mishmashing it.
I'll take responsibility for placing the, can it move? It can move, right? Later on, if we, if someone absolutely hates it, right? I think it'll be a permanent attachment when they place it, correct?
Well, we're not gonna place it, we're gonna deliver it, and Public Works is going to install it. Oh, well, then it goes to Parks and Rec then.
But I think you've gotta, we probably need to, and the placement is if they're gonna add more benches to it, then making sure.
Wanted to have a plan.
Well, he knows, the goal was for them to add one um Veterans Day. As long as he's over there with the veterans, I guess.
Well, yeah, that's the desire, but.
I mean, the idea is we have more, have more than.
Yeah.
And you might even have, if there's a need for somebody to sponsor a bench, instead of the benches we've been putting out there, we could have them. Those could be more permanent, that you could actually have, you could sit and use.
Melissa, could the Parks and Rec Committee make a recommendation on where and when we can deliver the bench?
So you could encourage.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the, on on the uh pier would be a good idea for the suggestion.
I don't know, I'm just gonna ask. Can the Parks and Rec do this?
Alright.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, next, anyone?
Yes, unless you have something? Good. Okay. Um as you know, I had a lot of phone calls this weekend. Um is there any way that we can put on the next agenda, discussion about food trucks and signs? That goes along with the food trucks.
You too.
I I mean, I was inundated with phone calls this weekend over it. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I'd just like to thank uh Town Manager Adams and staff. I probably have had, in the last two, three months, probably had a dozen emails or texts or Facebook messages that I forwarded to Town Manager Adams and her and the staff and department heads. Have usually responded to the citizens within twenty-four hours. Really appreciate the timely and uh informative responses you guys have made. And um actually, I'd like to also welcome our TV viewers and YouTube viewers. Uh we really haven't uh brought you guys into the audience officially. So um if you have any feedback for us, we'd love to hear from you by text, Facebook, email. Uh reach out to Town Manager Adams or our other staff, uh as you deem appropriate. We're glad to have you on board with us, and we'd love to hear from you uh out there in uh cyberspace and on uh Channel Seven on uh cable TV. And I think that's all I have.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to announce that um that uh Dixie Youth Baseball District uh championship tournament is coming to Broward Park uh on June sixteenth and seventeenth and possibly eighteenth. So I'd like to invite everybody out to help support that. The winner that will go to the state tournament, and that winner will go to the World Series. That's when we really have to take our wallets out.
Yeah.
Is that a particular age group?
Uh I'm sorry, that's eight and under baseball. Eight and under baseball.
Anyone else?
We're doing that with Parks and Recreation in conjunction with the Youth Association, Parks and Rec.
Okay, we appreciate everyone's attendance to- tonight. Don't you remember uh to support our Police Department and our Appreciation Week for them? And also our Public Works Department uh the following week. And we appreciate everybody uh bearing with us this evening. And do we have a motion?
Mr. Jordan.
Alrighty, thank you very much. We'll see you Monday.